Okay, welcome to the January 23rd Council meeting. Now six to five, we have a motion to call me in order or hold me in order. We have one guest in our gallery who we want to do two minute question to get out of the way. Our early council or would you like to move around and talk?
Can I make the recommendation to move the close to the end?
And we would head that way. Is my quarter is seven or?
As soon as you've dealt with section ten.
Before we go to committee at all, yes.
So should we send us all the time?
The residents are going to have to leave for the closing and then come back when they're in home. If they like the tent, they'll all.
Okay, mine's the Gattil. Why don't we give it a ticket? I don't believe there's any allegations.
Just wondering on the phone, what will be closed?
Want to change the order? A motion to move the close to the end after the reports and to move the two minutes. Question period at the number two position. We have a motion for that. Okay, second, second, okay, all in favor? Okay, propose. Motion carried. Okay, with that, we'll go to anyone online would like to ask a question, please raise your hand. For anyone, anyone in the gallery would like to ask a question? Okay, we take podium.
First of all, happy new year to everybody. Second is about one year and one month and fifteen days. From the beginning that I came over here and just tried to solve very, very simple. Result case. That it is not resolved yet. Actually, my wife asking the lady as a council that how long does it takes to arrange the? Parking committee. She said that four to six weeks. Right now it's sixteen weeks and nothing happened. I have a question, why?
Okay, I'll just, if the council permits me, I'll answer. We have put together a task force.
Yes.
And it was announced that it would be up to ninety days and then we would go to council and consider constituting a committee.
Yeah, the problem.
So, excuse me, I'll just finish. This week, so it was up to ninety days, we're sixty days into that process now. So I would imagine there's going to be another meeting or two and then those recommendations go to council.
The problem of these ninety days is just medicine after the illness died. Why? Because they are starting to come over here. I have sent a picture to you even though that at six thirty AM, they are there. We have to have something immediately that they stop them. No society, no country, even though no homes can survive without any regulation. We don't have anything here. The people come anytime they want it. What I'm requesting one more time and tonight I need the answer and resolution, which is? When all the signage that has been there for fifteen to seventeen years, why it has been removed without any? It doesn't hurt anybody. Why? Just a question, why? This is the reason that I'm asking, please rematch all the signage. And that sixty days, you have thirty days more, it's going to be on the disaster of the parking lot. Please make it as soon as possible, this week or next week, just finish the task, task. Otherwise, I'm proposing again. Parking committee or right now, I'm telling you that to think that it's very important for the parking. I wanted to just parking committee resolve all the problem for the parking lines way. But if you want to take more time, put one barrier. For the cabaret room that is automatically open and closed at eight thirty to ten PM. Otherwise, we are going to have, we are going to be as a East Hastings. They are coming here after ten, stay there till on the morning, even though it's not secure for us. As a link, I'm telling you, it's not secure for my house, our house, it's not secure for my wife and my daughter and myself and the other resident. Okay, I'm just put to sign it back, thank you. I don't have any, any problem for that. Please make a decision tonight because it's more than enough that any patient just thinking of when, who, when, right now. I need that, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask one question from everyone on the council.
Okay.
Who is, who is against of the parking committee? If anyone has a problem, please tell me, I have a problem and give us the problem, the reason.
Okay, I've added an extra two minutes, so you've had four minutes.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I had a ten minute delegation that I have said it and unfortunately it got misunderstanding about the delegation. That even though Marina or before said that I made a decision, no, nobody made the decision for any topic that anyone want to talk. This is the freedom of speech and, and. The, I, with all respect for the CIO, he wrote it that unless this is a new topic, that's right. But does the old topic had been solved? Not yet, of course. The resident feel that, okay, two minutes is not enough for me. Okay, I requested for ten minutes and after ten minutes, there is no approval involved.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to meet with, with our staff during working hours. Because council won't be able to give you a decision, that's not for, you've got some issues about parking and.
Oh, I have some issue, no, I don't have any issue, okay, it's an issue from the early years. What, what should I do?
We're going to take a reseller. We're calling in order. And we'll move right into the close portion of our meeting. There's no further questions. Do we have any, it's subject to labor. Yes.
Just move the close to the end of the vote.
Oh, sorry, my fault. Okay, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Any changes, edits?
So we could, yes, so you have more representative to change. All you can do is have a little agenda as a venue.
Okay, just like to point out that on. On the minutes or further on the information report indicated that I would update. I would bring an updated version of the information. So I'd like to just put that on table and I think we can remove the request for decision. Page four. And replace that actually with request for decision based on, on some very, very current information. So if I could just share the updated. This first page is the same, the second page outlines. The second page outlines the variation of scope. And as a result of the information that's come forward today from Linstone Company. Right forward.
So Michael, to be clear, you're removing and updating, you're removing what item, ten A one?
Okay, ten A one, I'm updating, I think the page one is the same, page two adds information regarding the scope of the project. And the ten A two, Lions Bay Beach Park, the request for decision. Replace the jetty request to the request for a B C bid application. Significant change here clearly, but it's as a result of some legal progress completed today.
So you remove that ten A two?
Uh, removing ten A two, yeah.
And provide. Okay, so with that amendment, other problems, changes on the table.
The report of the minutes.
And moving the close portion meeting to the end, item number ten. Any other amendments or edits? Oh, do we have all of them? But something, talking. Okay, all in favor? Oh, motion carried. Okay. Through all of the minutes, item number seven, you have a motion to approve the minutes.
We have.
Thank you, straight down. Business arising from minutes. Unfinished business. Okay, we'll type number ten, reports, the committees of council row and council comment.
Okay, the, the information report was included in the agenda. But I, we have added the second page which, which outlines the scope. Change that has been worked with, with the, with the beach park committee. And in conjunction with their, the government, who is the provincial representative. There's been ongoing discussions with, with the province regarding the fact that the grant that we were given some three years ago. Will not buy what was originally hoped, but we had referred to, so we've had to, we have approached. The province and asked if it would increase the grant and they said no. So they've said basically you have to do, we have to work within the funds that you have. So the committee has worked very, very hard to get the best value of for the funds that we have. And so the, there were a number of, some of the items that were in the original scope, it will not be addressed at this point. Potentially, some of those could be in a phase two application at some point. The generals, we're looking to do a really fine job, a washroom, the enlarged playground area, the new covered pavilion. The new hearts scared, hearts skate seating area and rebuilding the kayak and SUV area. So the major thing we're talking about today really is the fact that the jetty will not be able to be addressed at this point. We're looking to reject it, guess that helps otherwise. And there's a number of initiatives underway with that.
Could you give me detail on that one?
On the.
On the other initiatives that are underway?
Other initiatives, the, the works department is met with various advisor, engineer. And looking at securing the jetty to protect the beach. I think they're also looking at improving the jetty and the beach itself. To put the beach in, in a condition where it doesn't have to be restored every year. What's been happening is with the, with the winter weather, without adequate protection, without adequate engineering, actually in the beach front. We're losing the sand and so on and there's a plan to touch it, to work with it. Oh, I could give it, it's actually not a beach, but that was on the mission of the beach park regardless. The jetty though, was simply an access to water, but one of the bigger, bigger issues is that it's, it protects the beach. And it's really critical that that, that, that protection occur and the works superintendent has been working with others to. To secure, to make sure that that, that work is, is done.
So anything else, council row?
I think pretty much, you know, there is a scope, we've had to adjust the scope. We have fixed it on the bank, we all know the, that the amount of, the cost of construction has increased dramatically over the last three years. And in particular, in the last year. And so we really are trying to do the best possible job, really get quality work done in terms of replacing the washroom. And, and the list that I've provided here at the same time as, and, as. Ensuring that the, the beach front is protected and, and it's. Some of the resources, resources, the community and not going, not wanting places. So what we've been working with the, with the village lawyer and the staff to, to prepare to, to see. How we need to proceed with the, with the beach, beach park. The beach park committees were actively involved in this. And ultimately, we've been advised that the route we need to take is through B C credit bid. So the work has spent time to prepare it for B C bid. And in conjunction with staff, in conjunction with the village lawyer, then as of today, we have recommendations. And, and for, to, to put forward to B C bid.
So we'll bring forward a motion. We're going to hear from council, thank you very much.
I was wondering maybe the town works manager was able to offer some extra.
Councilor, can you offer your information on the jetty and the beach work?
Sure, so we had a very productive onsite meeting with, with engineer named by Scott Christie. Who runs a firm called Portshore Technologies, called it to the chase. The jetty will have to be demolished entirely, it's currently comprised of six large logs. And that would be replaced entirely by jumbo log blocks and then rebuilt with angular blast rock. About one meter size blast rock. And they potentially tap with concrete or not, in pretty much different footprint. The issue around ammunition is not as complex as, as was felt or feared. The fact that there is one there now means that we have the right to contain it. Mr. Christie will be able to produce the environmental impact report that will provide us any necessary backup. If fisheries was to come calling or express concerns about habitat destruction and so on, essentially, we're not going to change anything. He also, while he was there, said that we would put in underwater burns in two specific locations based on his knowledge. He has a place on border and grew up on Christie Island. Funny enough. Understand the currents and the waves, if we put burns in two strategic locations, I won't bother pointing at the map. We could build up the toe of the beach by about a meter, making the waves break further out. Meaning that we would not need to do much construction on current retaining the floor. Therefore, by saving all of that money, I will just do some, some, rather than having to, which is currently planning. Underpin it in sections by digging up excavating, putting in rebar, et cetera, et cetera. So we would save a lot of money, currently budgeted and approved money on, on the wall itself. It also stopped eroding. The point being that doing the work will actually pay for itself in figuring about eight years in terms of of. Remedial beach area or swinging in new sand area. So it's, it's, it's an appealing project. He, I already told him to go ahead on, on public works budget to reduce the design, which we will then take to tender. The budget request, as you know, is a hundred thousand dollars. We will see where that, how well guessed that was. But I think this is a project that pays for itself, will, will provide. A real sort of one plus one equals three situation, we can get rid of some rocks on the beach. There's no requirement to go pick rocks out of the sand as I've been planning to do because we covered by a meter. So the sand will come back from the ocean. If we may do one last sling. So I think, I think there's options, you think quite nice here. If I ask the question.
Yeah, thank you.
The hundred thousand dollars that is for the jetty repair is whether the visual.
Yes, well, we do know about the burn, so I don't know what that's going to entail. There was some bath telemetry, which is the underwater control map required, which likely I managed to find. And where the jetty currently is, it's quite a very long to play with before the steep drop off that I'm sure everybody knows about. There, there is room to lay down a burn there. There will be a pile of rock placed in a strategic point on the other jetty where there is a bit of a drop, the drop off starts almost immediately. So it goes from two and three meter depths to forty meter depths.
Who is getting argue there was money? But the hundred thousand dollars is covered as they repair and replace the jet.
Yeah, the wild ass guess, if I can use that technical term, in such a good ass company. Well, you remember that there was also twenty thousand budgeted for the, for the wall last year. And I think we can either meld that into the hundred thousand dollar guess or, or let it go to spend.
Is it taken on to all this way? So significantly, while that is, you can use that one.
So a question I have is, I presume part of the jetty, which was seventy-five percent brand funded originally, was to protect the beach as well. Why would we now be removing that at seventy-five percent brand funding and asking for a hundred percent taxpayer funding for remediation of the beach? Why not proceed with both items? And why make a hundred percent taxpayer funding?
That's about beach committee.
We don't have a seventy-five percent funding, we don't have that funding available.
Well, that's something we should discuss.
We require.
Yeah, talk to this.
Would the, would the jetty count as a pathway?
To the sea?
Yeah.
Meaning utilizing current water access funding? Yeah, I think it could be. The design such as it is require, has sort of stipulated a kayak water access pathway on the north side of the jetty. Which perhaps is not the best workflow, traffic flow. There's actually a slope that goes down into the beach area right now, adjacent to the jetty. That could be poured and made much more accessible for people getting the pipes of kayak wreck. Than, than putting down on the north side of the jetty, so that might be a better use of the design. But yeah, I, I, I think the case could be made, it's beach access, over water access.
You might want to have the committee, beach committee, thought that idea around, something that comes to mind is putting kayaks in where the swimmers are. You may not want to do that.
Well, we don't really try to use that approach, that is already, yeah, kids around, we call them that, big boats and. Injury waiting to happen.
Okay, if that's, that is, in fact, if there's no flexibility there, the design needs to be informed.
If it, I'm saying that if your suggestion sounds like it's vital, still going to keep it over to the west side of the beach. Whereas currently, we have people walking through the center of the beach.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Take it to the perimeter inside.
So on, on the north side, which is where this, where the, the weather comes from, that rip wrap will be, have to be sloped at a certain angle. It can be a lot steeper on the beach side because the weather doesn't necessarily come from there, especially if we put these attenuation burns up. Your sub, sub water, underwater attenuation burns.
I'm going to make a suggestion, I, I think it'd be good for you to join the beach committee for the next meeting or one of the, have a chat with them. I'm afraid of the time here, saving time, is there a motion you want to put forward? Councilor, councilor.
Okay, so under the request for decision, so the Lions Bay Beach Park Advisory Committee regarding the B C bid. That staff be directly to submit the B C bid Lions Bay Beach Park improvement, interpretation to bid number zero dash one as soon as possible. And that's based on, we received documentation today from Linstone Company reviewing the, the. B C bid occupation and some very specific information provided and what's that information been implemented by staff.
Okay, that's great, so before we move on, motion, okay. Okay, the discussion comes to Blackwell, yeah.
And just something I would suggest, it would be, it would be wise for council to endorse the seal of this project. Before you entertain with this bid package, so it's to be clear, this bid package will tender. To, for the, for the supply and construction facilities set out in, in the tender documents.
So, so how are you learning, right?
I can't tell you, it's on my cell, I, I can't read the structure, I skimmed it. But principle, I don't challenge them to endorse the vice go. Then, based on that, that all of that becomes least, can you give us a proposal, motion on that?
Why don't we discuss it first?
Why don't we have a motion on the table and then we have a discussion, so motion please.
Okay, the, the list of, and the revised scope was in the information package. So I think that we included that in the motion or consistent or included that as part of the motion, I don't know what you suggested. I will, so you can specify the. That with each part project, you can re-scope. I think we do this to ease, yeah, but first of all, it was.
Shall we just discuss this first?
Let's have a motion on table and then we can have a discussion. Please give us a motion, Mr. Blackwell, and then I'll have a.
Okay, so with, with the motion could be, this is going to be reflective of where you were hoping to go. That the beach park project can re-scope to include. The construction of a new washroom building. And you enlarge playground area. New covered pavilion. And you had hearts skate, see, and then white street, white skating upgrades. Every building of existing kayak, SUV storage.
Can I move that motion? Okay, sorry. Okay, this kind of, we'll go, have a please, counter, have.
Okay, so. Let me start. I'm not sure how we got to this point and I wasn't even sure from what I'm reading here, what a high level budget of about eight hundred and seventy-five K represents. And so who, who did this, and what's, we were back to.
Councilor, for council row.
Always estimated by the, by members of the committee in conjunction with, with. The architect and various construction professionals.
And it's based on this.
Presenting it, it's going out to bid.
Based on that arrangement that we've seen was the actual construction drawings. We have special drawings in the building.
It's based on a construction drawings that event that were created to, to put out the B C bid.
Okay. And so on, we can use that method. Here, here's my concern, we, we have. A one point one million dollar problem. The test has always been too many to scope to cover underneath that. I think there was a very careful. She was about giving that amount of money. I think the, the jetty. Which was included in that, in their budget, they had a clear score budget of, I remember correct, ninety-six or ninety-eight thousand dollars. It was Carl's favorite term, engineering firm, by himself, something like that, that's the number, I think that's where your handicap comes from. It's something like that. It's a number. I think that's what your hundred K comes from. Um, so I think that hundred K from a powerful level, a reasonable estimate. We, we know the placecapes and the other bits and pieces, they add up to a couple of hundred K. So we're now saying, um, plenty of contingencies or seem to do anything, but what you think is going to cost us six hundred and seventy-five thousand. I think that rendering picture we saw, a lot of people want to have considered. Sure you can afford that? So I agree with a lot of people. So should I say a question, carry on the question. Um, I think that rendering is an example of soapy. Um, it's not what was originally envisaged when we had a budget between three and four hundred. We've got the core budget estimates that doubled up the other day, depending on the various orders, between three and four hundred. Um, oh, three thousand. Uh, we had as well as one option, which was a modular timber framed structure, which was the most expensive version. Um, but all along, I think the task of the community was getting back to that number. I, I find it really disappointing that we now are going to base on some high level bit take um, grant funded at twenty-seven cents to us on the dollar, um, provision to the jetty and just decide taxpayers are going to pay a hundred cents on the dollar and it's going to be covered under another budget, so without a, um, without a, I, I think we should work and get this back under budget and we should keep that particular part of the scope, which is key, should stay in the project.
Anything further, councillor?
Um, I have questions, but I guess about this contract. I'm trying to understand. We now talk, we want to, we want to put a project manager. Previously, we were trying to do a construction management deal. We, we have a construction manager that manages the beach park. Um, generally, that's why they're all, I think that we're trying to, I'm not sure if that's still the same idea. That's why I asked you this difference. This is a hard construction contract. Or do we still have a construction manager? So do we now have a, a construction manager with a project manager? Is that the plan? It's not clear. I'd like someone to explain that to me. Um, if you don't understand the contract, if I can scan it, I can problem. Read it. I mean, I'm staying what it is, what kind of contract it is. And we should at least be able to understand that. So I'm, yeah, I'm perfectly insightful for this. Um, I'm no longer having any problems. It's not a real issue.
Uh, councillor Kamal, councillor Broden?
Well, I guess my only comment really of the budget is that that was two years or three years ago that we had those talks with the modular building and having the three fat line. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe everything's only like thirty percent. So that would be kind of aligned with its numbers.
All right.
Well, this is the.
I think, I think there's been a real encouragement for the, for staff to undertake this, this, um, restoration of the beach park. And I think that we're looking at, at, um, moving that, that we've gone through very carefully, have, have the contracts reviewed, brought in numbers that we, that we feel very, very comfortable with. And that, um, that is council needs to respect staff taking it on and going with them. And I think without that, we can't move this, move this over.
Okay, councillor Royer? Yeah, I, I like what I'm hearing here about staff taking some of this on. Um, I mean, at, at a high level, what troubles me here again is that we just have a possibility, for example, my understanding that a permit is finished as to the drawings. I've never seen that. Where are the drawings? Where are the plans?
Why would you see that?
Why would the, the committee, which acts in an advisory role, the council, not bring all this material to council for fulsome consideration? And that would be part of that. So we're talking about scope changes here. Um, so where are the drawings? Where are the, uh, where are the permits that's been issued? That should all be part of a package here. One of the very basic stipulations is that any scope changes uh, have to be approved in writing by, by the grant authority. Those are not here. Um, I don't see them. I'm also concerned that we're now proposing to spend a hundred percent taxpayer money on protecting the beach when we could get some beach protection out of a seventy-three to seventy-five percent grant dollar. Um, so why wouldn't we still keep that in there? And then possibly reduce the load on taxpayers for further remediation that might be necessary at the beach? Uh, I mean, at, at a basic level, you know, I'm, I'm hearing about scope changes and, uh, budget estimates. Um, and yet there's no documentation here to back that up. Uh, we're being asked to approve something based on, uh, a sort of a, a, a written overview of things that aren't supported by any documentation. My biggest concern is where is the documentation that shows uh, that the province is in agreement with, with these scope changes? I mean, I, I would want to see that. It, it seems to me that needs to happen. I'm also concerned about the if we, as Neville pointed out, that we're having multiple levels of management that I presume we're now going to pay a project manager. How much is that going to eat out of the budget? I would guess that it might eat out, uh, close to what is being proposed at a hundred percent taxpayer funding for, uh, the beach remediation, just going to a project manager. Seems to me what we need is, we, I'm, I'm glad that we recognize that we need to begin a tendering process. But where, where, where is the document for us to look at and see what that tender is? Uh, what we're asking for? Um, it's labeled here as bid number zero dash one, but I, I don't see it. Um, there's just too little information to, to, to move forward on, as far as I can tell.
Okay, uh, before we go over, councillor Kamal, councillor Broden, any final comments?
Uh, Mr. McLaughlin has indicated that, um, the, the updated works have been submitted for approval. Um, and so I'm not anticipating any challenge with the province. So the province has been actively involved month over month in this project. So they're very supportive of it.
And councillor Blackwell, before I go.
Councillor Kamal, this is not going to land well, but this is the council. I can go back to Jerry Berry's comments to council. And at the end of the day, council is going to have to choose whether you want to double up on staff work and take on a staff role and review, send your documents and all of that and, and review the documentation from the federal government and the province. Or you assume that that's staff job or, or who are your hired professionals to take on that role? If, if council is going to choose to stay at the policy level, this is not the policy level. The policy level is, are we okay with these changes? Yes, no. If yes, God bless, go forward, make it happen. Not show me all of this, show me all of that. If council wants that, we can absolutely bring that. But again, that would be going against sort of that keeping things at that policy level, getting absolutely into the operational dynamics of this and the other project. There are, I can also talk to, uh, the other issues that I've heard, which are, what's happening with the head of staff? Staff can't do this project unless it puts down tools on it, which are if we're going to keep the lights on in the village, we have to give that credit. Um, so there's no staff capacity to take this on. It's a project. You do need a project manager. He manages. It's a very simple project. It's a washroom building with a few other things. It's pretty darn small. Um, but it does need somebody to make sure that the invoicing is coming in, the project is tracking as it needs to, scope changes are dealt with. It's not a lot of effort, but it is some effort. The, the process, as I've observed, it has shifted and changed over time and new information is fed into this. Uh, as you've heard on the table tonight, the most recent information that's found in today, uh, I would, you should update even further to this. Council is not going to know what the costs are going to be until you receive submissions on this. Uh, if anyone, if anyone, they'll be pissed. That could be one scenario. We get no good submissions. All right. Thanks, Lester Blackwell.
Uh, councillor Kamal, before we go to the question.
My comment on the first initial scope was sort of wishful with the reality sitting with the committee that things were going to draw off that list to, to budget constraints. The jetty was initially brought in as a nice path, but it actually isn't part of the beach park itself. So the other key items are where the committee has put their focus on what is going to be the most benefit to the user of the beach in general. And so I, I think the committee had the the liberty to be able to make these decisions. And when it comes to looking at R F Ps that go out, I have absolutely no interest in getting into the weeds when it comes to operational details for staff. That is, from my last term, I don't recall looking at R F Ps before they went to B C bid. I recall them coming back to us after the public works officer or the C A O had already put out the bid and brought back their recognition of the best option for us, and then we voted on that. So, okay, I see what you're.
All right, we'll solve the question. Uh, all of the paper, we've got around the table and we're kind of out of time this evening. One brief upon the basis.
Yeah, okay. Ross, you're right. We speak in this to council staff. Um, my office to add to some sort of purely that concept, I have some background in this, you know? I do for a system of our own help, which I don't think I've been able to draw. I expected a company view, but I didn't come to you, called the committee. And he doesn't make the decision to have a drama. They make very contentious to council. We make decisions. That's what we ask you, right? If you were talking, we'd get a different matter. Did you clean that or take it over? I think you should, right? Um, and I think that's where we should be going with it. I just really briefly, um.
Okay, we.
We had a project manager having that call. I'm looking at their last budgets. The timber framed option was for washrooms, including a storage room, was again sixty-eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. Um, so they're all good. Now, how do you best the kind of stuff we give up that we should consider? Um, so that they're totally.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
I, I.
I oppose.
Oppose.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, uh, second motion on table, councillor Broden, you read that?
No, I couldn't cover it. The, uh.
The B C bid?
Please record it.
The B C bid?
Okay, great.
You had the staff be directed to submit.
Right, I'm sorry, that's the staff with the initial on the stage, those changes. Okay, the staff be directed to submit the B C bid Lions Bay Beach Park Improvements Invitation to Bid Number Zero Dash One as soon as possible.
Okay, uh, second. Okay, discussion.
Okay, first.
Councillor Brown?
Um, I'm in favor of this. Once again, I, when you choose to take it or not, okay, it's, it's, it's a help to you. You want me to look at it, I will. You don't want it, you don't have to take it. I'll say to my councilhead, if that's the case, I'm no place to talk to that model.
Okay, any other comments?
Tell it by my, I, I decided rather preferred, uh, again, the documentation to be a part of us in this manner.
Okay, uh, all in favor? We'll call the question. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, opposed. Any motion carried? Okay, uh, next item was, uh, the, and this is for the report service, provided for information purposes only. Um, it was ten B one, Lions Bay Park Task Force. Do we, do we receive that? Okay, second.
All in favor? This is a question. Um, I provided a higher Lions Bay Highway Noise Task Force Report um, last Thursday. It was an improvement in your agenda, was that not? Roger, was that? Lions Bay Task, Highway Noise Task Force Report. It's in there, isn't it?
Uh, we've got ten B one, which is the parking task force and ten B two, which is the translink connector. So before we get on that, let's just, uh, let's approve, uh, B one and B two. All in favor of receiving those?
Received, yes. Sorry, all those collected?
Yes.
You don't need to receive them if they're based on the back of your own agenda, when you talk agenda, you're on that.
Okay, good. Any questions on those? Uh, okay, councillor Broden?
Quick question. How many people have you attended the task force parking?
Uh, the parking, uh, let's see, the, uh, highway noise, initially there was about, uh, eight, maybe eight on the task, on the highway noise.
That was, so there were two meetings together, that was six.
Yeah, and they split on our picture. So there was eight at the one end and there was probably seven.
The party maybe was at this.
Yeah, at least a dozen.
And then the second meeting, the, the meetings were, were separated.
Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, and the. Uh, very few, very, I think we're down to three. Yeah.
So the party for the highways?
Uh, the bar.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know, just one of that. Hey.
Yeah, it was good. Uh, and the connector, we had, there was another, I think.
The separate meeting was advertised, which was a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, uh, that was one, why actually was, there was no advertisement, uh, unfortunately. Uh, so it was requested to be put out in the agenda and in the village update and, uh, that was turned down by council. Uh, so that didn't help. Uh, the connector project last evening, how many showed up? It did. Uh, it was, it was put forward in the agenda and it was, uh, it removed from the agenda.
So you thought it was.
No, it was, it wasn't turned down by council.
Well, the advertising village update was turned down by council as well.
I remember the time going inside, I don't know if you did.
Well, it happened, uh, we put it forward, uh, at least twice or more and it was turned down each time.
Uh, I, I don't recall that ever being, uh, requested to table.
It was at the table.
Okay, fair enough. So it went out and turned down.
So the, the connector project last evening, how many did show up, councillor Broden?
Uh, I think this is eighteen, eighteen. Uh, sixteen.
Okay.
Seventeen.
So the parking and the highway noise are approximately sixty days into the process and the connector project is about forty-five, I think. Fifty days.
Uh, would council, would it be acceptable if council received the highway noise task force as well? Did I have that too?
B two five, the agenda, there's something about the. That's all.
Great. Yeah, that's the parking task force. This is the highway noise.
And when there's some information that.
It's, 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 it's.
Sure, okay. Okay, so. Okay, so it's just for information.
It's too late to add an on table item. We've been at this juncture many times before, so let's not, let's have it later. Sure, you can send it to all council later. That's fine. But it's not part of the agenda.
Uh, just in terms of getting the notice out there, uh, would it be okay, acceptable if we, we put in the village update next time we have a task force meeting for these three events? Any, would anyone have an issue with putting that in the village update? I do not.
I don't have any issue with publicizing things in the village update, but we're back to the point of task forces is something the council should consult about.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking that question. Actually, I'll put it forward as a motion. A motion to publish the, the next, uh, three task force meetings in the village update. I'll put that forward as a motion. Second, okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Okay, uh, we'll move right to the vote portion of the meeting. If there's nothing else and, uh, and that will be subject to you, uh, staffing and legal matters. Do we have a motion to move into call?
Um, just, just when we were talking about the, I used to reintroduce the kicking, we were talking about this. The bottom one, I thought, this can easily drive in force. So just, so just it's the agenda.
No, the, the connector project, don't come forward. I'm pretty happy at a meeting last night. There wasn't time to put it in here. Uh, if you, if you wanted some comments, I'm more than happy to, or councillor, uh, Broden can, can, uh, speak up, but, uh, Ron Wyer is leading that project and he's, uh, will be holding another meeting and, uh, putting together a report for council.
Which there's probably a meeting next night. Which there's a meeting next night, I'm going to.
That's the advertisement. Okay, do we have a motion to move into call? Move, second. All in favor? Oh, carry. Okay, I'll move into the call, just a motion. All right, welcome back to the council meeting of January twenty-third. We've just finished our vote session, there's nothing to report of. And at this point, we'll go to the gallery for any questions before we close the meeting off and move into the committee as a whole to review the budget. Any questions from the gallery? Okay, nothing, we have all concluded. The journey.
Oh, before.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
I.
Opposed, carry. Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll move right into the committee of the whole and we'll continue with the recording. Okay, we'll have, you'll call me quarter, time is forty-four. And with that, we'll. Any adjustments in the agenda?
Oh, I think we should discuss the discussion when we look over in a minute, but how long are we going to need for now? Because I think if we want to, we have needed around twenty-five minutes, which might be the next, just to the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell and Mr. Cherkov, how long will it take to walk through the budget?
In my recommendation, the twenty-five minutes is not enough time to discuss or have a fulsome discussion about any salient points that council or members of council have, like we the whole have to point out. I don't believe that it's going to be a useful process in that frame of time. I would suggest though, that I, well, I would put forth that I since our last meeting, you know, and then the first presentation of the budget, I've received very minimal feedback. I've had a conversation with two people and I guess that means we're doing a great job because I haven't seen anything come through the email or nobody's responded to requests to come and meet and discuss in person or on Zoom or. Okay, so I would say that if maybe a more productive session would be that we just adjourn for this the evening and please, as I suggested before, re-show it in person with your questions so that the next version of this will incorporate any comments, questions, concerns that you have going forward. And I think Ross would like to speak to like the timing of when we would like to do these committee meetings to accelerate the process and make sure we're on time with our financial applications.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Blackwell. Thanks, those two pieces, one is the night, but one is sort of the courses going forward. There's, there's different ways the council could entertain doing this budget. I touched on earlier one way, which is your front end at all and you work through the day and you. That's a slog and I think there's, it's clear the council doesn't have an appetite for that. So the question is, what is the appetite? So there are different options. One option, sort of the most meager option I would suggest council consider is meet every Tuesday for two hours from six to eight. And those dates, do you have those dates in?
Thirty of six, thirteenth, twentieth.
Say again, sorry.
January thirtieth, the sixth, February sixth, the third, February thirteenth and the twentieth.
Twentieth. Is the twentieth a council meeting day too?
I think that might be on the down, that's okay.
That would give a council four two-hour blocks of time. As I was mentioning earlier, when it comes to budget numbers at this point in the evening, my recommendation to you is not to go past two hours, do six to eight. Some folks may be fine going later than that, but not council as a whole typically. People start to drift out, drift out, they start to zone out on those numbers. So if you wanted to compress that schedule, you could then think about doing, instead of every Tuesday until twentieth, to see where that takes you, you could do Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to eight. So need to figure out what is your preferred schedule and in terms of days and what is your preferred time? If you go through a couple of days from six to eight, you find you have lots of gas in the tank, which is W L. And then you've been always on the meetings longer, suggest the best place to start. It's bite-sized pieces, not overshoot, being over ambitious with plowing through all these numbers. There's a lot of information.
So comments? So we'll go around the table on council comments, Counselor Royer.
So I don't think anyone should presume we don't have gas in the tank right now. Joe, as to your comments, the lack of response that you've received must mean that everything's wonderful. I, I mean, I, I would reserve my questions and queries as to the budget to an open meeting here. I think that's part, an important part of public accountability and I do have some. My preference would be that we move forward right now. And I mean, this, this is a normally scheduled council meeting, whether it's committee the whole or not. I mean, I'm ready to go. The public is in attendance. I, I don't see why we wouldn't move right now and that I, I see no sense in restricting us to eight o'clock.
Okay, Counselor Brown.
Can I just give the dates again, thirtieth and sixth, what was that?
The thirteenth and the twentieth.
Okay. So I, on the last meeting, I was asked to count for, count for my meetings so we can do this and I don't have meetings. That was a law. Let's figure out, I hope the panel was going to have these smaller meetings, started last week. And it didn't happen. The states is. The sixties. It's going to be a long one, so that was fine, twentieth. The regular ones, and the thirteenth. Okay, so none of this clash, okay, that's fine. I'm quite happy to have these more regular meetings, I think this should do. I was quite happy, even tonight, I wasn't planning to leave by eight. I, I agree with Mark, it's a partly, we need to have the discussions in the open. This was to be an opportunity for public to see us debate and discuss the items. And especially on the supplementals, this stuff needs to be openly discussed and discussed. There's not, that would be part of it. There's no point in having that discussion with you and one else. It doesn't really exist. If there's a question to have some help, maybe, or whatever, sure, if you come to me, bless your question, as you want tonight.
Yeah, okay.
So those kind of things, yeah, I see those all, I ask those. But this, what I believe should be discussed in the open, that's part of, I mean, that's part of the procedure. The other observation I have is on the previous council, hopping back to the previous council, I did things better, one thing they did, previous council, we did the utility vouchers upfront to do it. So first thing you need to pass, because you have to pass it in May.
We're trying to get utility bills out quite early, yes.
That's true, yeah, that would be a part of it, say, so you have the number, you have it.
Yes.
We assume, that's normally a pretty simple session.
Yeah.
And having all the garbage picked up and pick another. So they can, you know, I suggest we pull that out and get that out of the way.
Okay, yeah, that's a great idea.
We are tonight starting to get some of the pieces of it. I would suggest you try to run into some of the supplementals. Because I think that's where a lot of this, the debate from back of the turn, the council consensus, hopefully, on where we should be spending money, that's, that's where we need to spend some time, there's a lot of discussion to be had.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell.
Because for sure, the expectation is that the rubber opinion is a lot around supplement, it's just the size. But I would recommend strongly that you tacitly confirm your core budget so you know how much you have to play with. With your budget supplement. It could be that council just maintains status quo with those core service levels. And I've also seen the council make some pretty drastic, not this council, councils made some pretty drastic cuts to the core budget in order to accommodate some of the pressing supplementals.
So, okay, so I'm getting the chicken in there. So I'm getting utilities knocked out, then to the operations part, go through all of that, then we went to where the rubber hits the road, to the part we need to discuss. Sure.
I, I would agree with that approach, I think that's an excellent idea. Utilities, we wanted to front end that because we got to get those bills out. And that really isn't our, historically, water, sewer, and solid waste. The budgets, when you look at money coming in, money coming out, it's generally a small surplus every year and it's very consistent. And it adds to the existing reserves for those that pay for future capital products. But they basically pay for themselves. And so with the base budget that we have currently at a five percent, it's basically with projected inflation next year at three percent is a two percent over inflation. And basically it's adding a little bit more to the kitty for future capital products. That would be my recommendation with to keep, keep that status quo. And then we can get into the meet, and we should have a fulsome meeting about that. But I think we can get that through that quite quickly. And then we go back to, as Mr. Blackwell had said, looking at the operational budgets to see if there are items that we can cut out and or if there's any items that perhaps should go up. We need to have that conversation, I think it's a longer conversation for sure. And, and move forward. And then the last session really is like Ms. Blackwell said, here's what we have as far as revenue coming in. Here is our reserves that we can draw upon and then discuss alternative funding, which may be debt. And, and have that discussion once we understand where the base budget is at, or where the budget is going to be.
All right, yeah. Counselor Brown and Counselor Kamala, before we make a difference here, whether we can go through this in detail or, or.
I, I would really be open to an hour to go through, see the changes from the last time we discussed it, answer some questions, some of the questions that I raised and by email. I'd be certainly, you know, prepared to say no, go till court deny.
Okay, Counselor Kamala.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that, but no longer, it's right to Ross's point. After that, it's random. Yeah.
Okay, it's seven forty-five now, I would be in favor of going eight thirty-five. Any other comments before we ask Mr. Cherkov to lie all the way forward?
I'm just getting that in the vision on the council's preferred meeting dates, as you say. What option is every Tuesday for those. You can. Excuse me, we beat that number that changes on Thursdays, so.
Okay, are we fine with Tuesdays or do we want Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Does, does the six o'clock start work for everyone here?
I will be giving regrets for the first two days, I will be out of town for the first time in four years. So I'm not going to spend my precious time with my family zooming in to discuss the numbers for two hours, so. I will leave it in your good hands, I know you have much more in-depth questions than about at this time and.
So I personally, I'd be good for Tuesdays, I, I'm good to go for six or starting at six, possibly a little later. I'll hammer to others.
Yeah, Tuesdays, I can be, you know, with what you said, so I can do six or seven, if you want. I'm good with Tuesdays and that's where we're heading off.
All right, Tuesdays and six.
It could, if there's uptake to go earlier, earlier the better than day. There's any uptake on the five.
I can do five on Tuesdays.
I can do five. At least for the next few Tuesdays.
I'd prefer six, but that's better for me.
I can do either.
Just your own for five.
Pardon?
Tristan, you're on to do five, okay.
First couple, first couple at five, that seems so, and then almost the six.
Okay, just to start us off this evening, anything you'd like to start with before you pass off to Mr. Cherkov?
Thank you, no, I think what I wanted to say I have said, so it would be an interest of time.
Okay, Mr. Cherkov.
Oh, great.
Please.
I keep that one question before you proceed. The, the numbers that we had last time were updated.
Yes.
Are these now numbers that include year end for twenty twenty-three?
We processed our last check run about, just about a week ago and just before we checked out the R C M package. So the actuals in twenty twenty-three reflect everything we've had come in, updated seven thirty-first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, we should say.
So these numbers are current as to year end.
Yes, there may be some straggling bills, but we think about ninety-eight percent of everything we've got is in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cherkov. Murray, is it possible to share the screen with yours now? Is that the package just.
So while we're in. I did put it on table, three pages for your information. There was a request from our peers meeting to have a little more detail on labor breakouts for coworkers and administrators. So we've got some graphs and information, receptive levels. And then.
Oh, this is.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah. And. Okay. The last page of that on table item has a great point to this draft, that difference in current draft. It's showing the taxes by the new draft to the received for the day. Now that very. Primarily is including a five fill grant, that's what we're going to receive for. It could be applications, based on my discussions with you and what it was. I just wanted to tell you another part. You know, it's the, it was a request for an increase in the, in the contract for our program manager for $10,000, that's in the budget supplementals. And an adjustment to E O C, registered, E S S, I should say. Or more consistent with last year, I think the first program had $2,000, but I did for them. For the entire expense. It's a, so on a global look on the schedule A, so circle deficit, eight hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. And not substantially, substantially changed since our prior discussion or our version of this. Taxation represents. That is, we will talk about operational discussions going forward weekly, about where we want to land on taxation. I would draw your attention to.
Joe, before you, before you move past that, can I just ask you a question on the schedule A?
Yeah.
Grants, it has gone up to one point eight over the last iteration and why is that?
Grants, so.
It's at one point eight or four?
Yeah. Four, so that's, this is the small grant adjustment we had. The grants that were, the grant portion of the funding for plat and lack of each part. Other grants went up by seventy thousand dollars for the lot pipe trail, Modi grant.
So that is, that is the change from, from earlier in the month?
Yeah.
Okay, and can I just ask a, a general question as to schedule A? I mean, my understanding, as you say there, is that we have to balance the budget, so I'm looking down at the bottom and I see a, a hole of five point two million. Are we not required to be zero at that line? So how are we going to balance that? And if I can just ask my second question here. Maybe you could just walk me through this. On the amortization under adjustments, I see a credit of seven hundred seventy. And isn't amortization actually? And isn't amortization actually a debit? So how can that be listed as a credit and then give us a an additional cash surplus of one point six?
So in response to your first question.
Yeah.
Our surplus deficit on an accrual basis is eight hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. We're adding in basically off of reversing out non-cash amortization, seven hundred seventy thousand dollars for getting to your cash surplus. And then in income, there's an actual gain on debt of forty-three thousand dollars. So we're reversing that out as well as we're reducing that amount, get to a cash amount.
So sorry, so the seven hundred seventy is not a debit, it's a it's a it's actually a.
Increasing our cash.
So is amortization not a, this is a depreciation, is it not, of of non-handables?
Is it depreciation of a tangible capital assets, yes.
So the depreciation, so it's actually a cost?
It is in. Yes, that so effectively what amortization is showing you, but I'm sure you you don't understand is a what a replacement cost for over the estimated useful life of this thing, this equipment would be.
Yeah.
In reconciliation to the cash surplus, we add back. We've deducted amortization in that kind of cost.
It's in twice, right?
Yes.
Exactly, it's fixed.
And then we're reversing it that out, that non-cash item to come to our actual cash flow.
Okay.
And then to your your first question, yes, where's our financial plan balance should be zero, we're going to a zero balance. How this is presented is we haven't made any decisions as to which capital product we're prioritized. What's currently here are the asks for everybody. And then our when we get into infrastructure discussions about supplemental for capital infrastructure, do we want to buy a fire truck? All that stuff, it's all in there. So we need prioritize what we can take out of reserves to pay for it. Currently, we haven't had a discussion on how do we want to fund this stuff. So that's why this is showing a negative. When we have the discussion of where we want to fund that from. It will come down to zero. But this just shows you, if we did nothing, no draw from reserves, no new debt, that's where we're at.
So what we actually have to fight with, didn't have the difference between the sixty-five one and the five two-two zero, none of that.
Yeah.
Right? One point one million bucks.
Yeah, and that's the current you're adding into our reserves. And then we have previously existing reserves and that was eleven.
So I'm saying to repress, repress capital increases of one point one million bucks instead of six point three, listening to that.
Yeah.
We were one point one million bucks already available, playful.
Yes, that's something we don't draw on reserves.
Assume we don't draw five double.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Reddick, under the last three questions.
Yes, thank you.
Before we hit this page, gas tax, six hundred fifty thousand dollars this is next year. Right?
Yeah.
That's that's what we have to spend it by, right?
That was when it was, yeah, so.
Is there more gas next next year?
Program, I've been looking into it. So they've been debating whether you're going to extend it or not. There's been no decision. But as of now, there we received our last payments. Thirty-one grand or whatever it was. So we're not getting further funding and we're going to spend it by twenty twenty.
One three three five.
Yeah.
We only go to decide how we're going to spend six billion thirty K at least.
Yeah.
In this budget cycle.
We could do it this year.
Well, yeah, we can be spent on this year, we should start talking about now.
Yeah.
So there's money that needs to be spent on something. I mean, to get back to the problems and say, we will not be doing it, right?
Yeah, and so the and just again, what I'm presenting in our meeting when we discussed funding and reserves in in detail. The this gas tax fund, the usage of this has been in the five-year plan for a number of years. That's when basically it was set up. Can we get this money in order to spend it at the end of the cycle? When for definitely I'll spend it, but that would be a chapter from reserves. Like it's currently sitting in reserves right now.
Yeah. Okay, we're taking this.
All right, so go to revenue. Basically, top line. Maybe getting a bit ahead of myself, so we have to make some decisions about the tax. So currently, G B, but it includes a thing larger to plan increase in property taxes. And so that would equate to one hundred eighty-one, one point eight million or one point nine million dollars in taxes. So if they want to know one here, kind of broken out. Discuss for what any iterations of what percentage increase would be. So if we go to six percent, it's an increase in revenue for property taxation of a hundred seven thousand dollars. That's about ten percent of that for the associated infrastructure levy. And then we go down to proposed increases from various municipalities in the warming that Belkara, other meeting last night, it's going to be around eight percent. Well, now it's at nine point five. Pretty much every is around the eight to nine percentage. Our profit half increases of the past two years were six point five percent, point two, six percent, three. We can get a lot of more open discussion, but at a preliminary starting point is to mall, as we're thinking about, I guess, thoughts going forward. Is that I think my recommendation would be a nine percent increase in property taxes. And the additional revenue would be approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars. And I would suggest that we earmark that for specifically to put into our reserves to pay for future funding. I've got a number of I'm leading into how we're going to find capital projects. I've got some alternatives, but that basically to that. It's more long-term thinking because fifty-seven thousand dollars one year is going to be a whole lot. As we build that up over ten, fifteen years, effectively like say, in a, for instance, fire truck. Well, we we decide to go forward and purchase fire truck. Fifteen years, you've got to recycle it again, sell it, but then by that time, we'll have enough to buy new one. So anyways, that's that's my recommendation.
If I could to add to that, you know, there's there's so many moving pieces around this. But it's cheaper to taxpayers to increase taxes somewhere in this vicinity rather than to borrow from MFA and pay interest. It's low interest, but it's still interest payments. And the other sort of silent piece in this is, and this is something that we currently benefit from. When we have this volume that we have to enjoy in reserves, that provides us with a nice chunk of interest that is sort of effectively free money that can be utilized for undertaking projects. So for instance, Joe, twenty twenty-three, what was the interest accrual?
Interest was.
I say this only for background information.
And and we should not assume that those interest accruals will be around for years to come.
You should not.
We have the benefit of having a certain amount in our reserves because we haven't executed our capital projects. So we have this money in the bank that is creating interest. There hopefully, when we're soon getting some, go through the investment policy that's closed. So I can start putting some money into GICs and getting a higher rate of return. I've been pulling various banks on what our kind of rates would be expecting. Currently around seven, seventy percent, depending on what.
Shouldn't it click that next year?
Yeah, so I plan on locking in now, but.
So it's something one hundred and thirty thousand or something like this.
Well, I'm very, yes. Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure we have payment paying for interest of money that we get borrowed. That's that's the borrowed money for objective projects.
Yes, yeah. Well, no, we haven't borrowed for anything and not spent that money, but we have bought.
That was in my items.
But we haven't. Okay. Delivered on projects.
Okay. So we have the money, okay, before the money that we haven't spent yet because we haven't committed the project.
For the money that we haven't spent. Our borrowings are currently in the.
Borrowing has all been spent.
Yeah, that that was, I think, about twenty sixteen, there's the bylaw.
We're we're exhausted there, but. So.
Yeah, okay, so we need to get that's another discussion like.
I mean, we can answer you, we can. Before we move on there. I do want to say a couple, two good questions.
Yeah, jump one.
On the small community grant. That was this year was three hundred thousand dollars. Why did we spend three hundred thousand dollars on this year?
Small community grant.
Yeah.
Are you looking at?
On your page.
Page five.
Page five, where you were.
Oh, yeah, right here. So this motivation grant is just getting in coming into general surplus at the moment. It's not being reserved for anything specifically. And that's also what our reserves are going on. Theoretically, we use them that for capital projects.
Okay, so I'm just thinking.
Not specific, these general surplus is a, it's a
So, yeah, okay.
We can call it wine by wine.
Excuse me, girls, I was using myself.
And and sorry to that to that number, wasn't that the building dollar?
So we had a community revitalizing grant or candidate growth grant, community growth grant, that was nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars that we received.
Yeah.
So that went straight in, it was unrestricted, straight into general surplus. We applied three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for road paving that we did with the blacktop with those funds because we decided last year not to buy a fire truck and then do road paving. So there is still like six hundred thousand dollars sitting in our surplus, general surplus unrestricted from that. This is collecting interest.
So the actual of two ninety-eight is the spend on the paving?
No, this, if you please, don't refuse, this is the money coming in.
Okay.
Okay. What was we in the?
Money coming in.
Okay.
And it is the D C ambulance rental thing hasn't, I think that's one of your like one for the year. It's higher up and paid on note twelve. I just noticed that actuals for nine twelve, yeah.
Right over there.
That equals a ninety thousand for this year. That's because they haven't paid the final bill, right?
Yeah, yeah, when the late thing.
That's one of the, sorry, that's one of the late.
Okay, this is what I mean, very clear.
But we don't change that.
Good. I guess see here on revenue. And with the notes here. Of property tax, parcel tax, everybody knows about water chili raise, I would suggest a little bit five percent. So separating it out for your request, the amount of the out interest served.
Joe, one sec, note fourteen. Is that what on our package is page seven?
I definitely, yeah.
Okay, can I just ask their question? The Light Bay Beach Park, I'm reading in my package, total cost one point seven million, seventy-three percent grant funded.
One point three seven.
It said one point seven in our package.
It's one.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Yeah, it said it there, one point seven, okay.
So, yeah, I thought it that you asked about just putting out the climate action, electric act funds. Funding orders in reserve. So currently from care, we've accumulated six thousand eight hundred dollars in reserve. And now G cap funding the last two years, fifty-one thousand or so a year. We're at the hundred eight thousand, that's the new reserves for funds to be extended.
But is it carrying on best, or was it?
I would have to go back to, you know, that that they, how long the funding program extends for, I'd have to check.
I need need my understanding before we get to that supplemental, nice bit of a.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. I would love to find out.
I think it might just be a few years, but it'd be something to replace it. But you can find out what that might have been, what the claims.
And there was also another interesting, so I had spoken, I guess, I don't know if this plays for today, but maybe I'll talk with you later with regards to climate action committee, I had spoken with the consultant about basically self-funded programs for environmental access for buildings, as long as they'll do everything and then decide and push them with the funds. I'll ask you to. Okay, so on the administrative, well, so there was a question from Counselor Robyn as to why the order of the departments had been changed from the prior version. There was a suggestion that we, if we presented it by highest cost center to lowest cost center. Start from the beginning, look at biggest budget area first, it could concentrate attention to that. As we either run out of time or move to items that are not so significant, they're towards the end of the package. So so the general administrative budget is projected to be one point five billion twenty twenty-four. Largely salaries and benefits. There's an allocation component for like five hundred thousand dollars. The rest of it is fairly straightforward or similar to party gears. I can go through.
Can we just, Joe, on the salaries and benefits, what what was that? Your nominee in twenty twenty, was that just a different spread or something? Why did we have so much eight hundred sixty-nine thousand twenty rooms, sorry, two million rooms?
Yeah, I'll draw your attention to the, but you're on the air on the package. And you have a detailed breakdown for you here. So if you look to
Something where it's.
Second page of chart verified category. And in twenty twenty-two, currently that was costs associated with the former C A O. All other budget categories are relatively consistent. And then I do have the breakdown in the following last place there, sort of numbers wise. It's broken out.
Okay, so the sixty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-three dollar increase for this year over last year's budget. Not budget, actually, not actions, no, the last year's budget. Which is eleven point three percent. What does that represent? Are we increasing? In the state because in ninety-nine, it describes exactly as we have it.
Right, so it was an interesting exercise and kind of create this out. Where if you look at the, I'd say, twenty-three actual versus twenty-four, I didn't. So on those minds, on that last page of that supplemental package table here. So C F, twenty twenty-three actual for CFO, a hundred thirty-six thousand, that includes all benefits, all costs to employer. But it's only for part of part of the year.
And look at the actuals. Talking about budget to budget.
Budget, budget, yeah.
Why is there increase? Are we budgeting for most that magnitude or are we giving eleven point three percent?
No, no, definitely not. So it'd be budget to budget. So C A O budget in twenty twenty-three was depressed as there was some we weren't expect, we didn't know how much of the C A O cost would be included in twenty twenty-three. There was a lot of, we had mentioned three C A Os at that period of time. And I believe that Mister Miller that was basically we're kind of there.
Shouldn't have been budgeted, it should have been actuals.
Okay, I know that.
Okay, no, okay, I really pay the question different, same right of order, but three numbers, one, two, and three. Number two says twenty twenty-four budget, six is on admin, one fourth of the reserve step, one part time. And then above that, she doesn't have a seat back. They've said in seconds, there's nothing in this budget to increase any staff. And then above that, she doesn't have a seat back. They're seven seconds. There's nothing in this budget to increase any staff in the budget. For the period.
Yes, so, um, the, uh, what I would say is that, that, um, uh, for, uh, our C A O expected costs in the next year after, um, uh, so there's a an increase.
Admin, admin, drop that admin.
Admin.
You're not here on the admin, says one full time admin system, one part time admin system. Is now budget for any increase in staff. That's taken.
No. It'll be that one part time staff has been allocated as full time because we were spending, we were paid full time. They were designated part time, but they ended up working full time hours, so we've just made it full time. Isn't that correct, Joe?
That's correct. Um, they were at, uh, point six, but are actually about one effectively.
So the statement is included, you're telling me now we're budgeting to add an extra point four F T. That could.
Uh, effectively, yes, in the budget. We're, I'm basically treating her as a full time employee because that's really a counter reality.
I mean, I previously said we budgeted to add an extra point four F T, this answer.
I I would have to, so I don't know, so I could, because here's the question, was that point six budgeted for one? Had it been?
It's always been a point six.
Yeah, but was there budget for a one? You know, and was it budgeted at point six or was it budgeted at one?
Um, the but previous budgets, um, were, uh, based on, uh, point six, but effectively we're paying.
That's what I'm put, so you had enough budget to pay for one. So you were budgeting for one, even though it was allocated at point six.
Yeah.
No, we were paying for one, but budgeting for point six.
Well, so then we'd be in a deficit, right?
No, because they didn't, because you were, you didn't fully have step one more for the full year.
Yeah, our people have turned over.
There was no one around that some.
So you have your periods of like for two months, there's no item. And so it's like, oh, I washed out in the mix, but on, uh, actual staff staffing level, anybody that's been here has not been point six, been full time.
Okay. So in the last year, in all the previous years, with all the alternate positions, all the points six, who have increased, uh, three years ago to get to there. Um, and now we're adding a point for another point for two admin positions, that's the S. Correct. Yeah, nobody's saying here, but that's the S. So we increased the step and we stepped by point four F T, that's the S.
Uh, here's the ask.
Thank you.
Joe, a question on note one there. Um. It says that this includes vacation and sick payout for the previous municipal account. Is there any documentation of that, Frank?
Uh, yeah, so, um, each year, so what would happen, I got my back. Six years, uh, so there's a running spreadsheet on accrued vacation and wellness. Um, and, um, I guess people weren't taking any sort of vacation or wellness days. Uh, and then towards the end of the year, uh, they would take, uh, twenty to thirty thousand dollars as a payout of, um, accrued benefits.
So you're saying that that figure is thirty thousand elevated due to vacation and sick payouts to the previous municipal.
I think for example, the previous CFO was not. Then national thirty thousand in payouts for, uh, for vacation.
I found that sounding good.
I thought it was fantastic. I don't.
So I mean, okay, I've been, the previous council. Three years ago. Three years ago now, we corrected the practice that allowed staff to collect as much. Uh, to accrue as much vacation as they like. They were using it as a kind of retirement plan. Um, and Cal was the number was just, the number was growing, had grown significantly, which is key words. So we decided we wanted to cap that. Uh, with a lot of negotiation, discussion with the C, with, uh, through the C A O with the rest of staff. And there was a cap put on us, and at that time, there was almost payouts for for people that had gone over the cap and put on.
So how could we then have included in this figure thirty thousand of payouts if that was capped previously?
Uh, when we capped people, there were people that had more accrued vacation than what we kept at.
Four weeks.
We're not allowed to go any higher than two weeks, so we had to pay the note.
Mm-hmm. So we're going up with thirty thousand based on a twelve.
I I I know, I'm just, I was commenting on the accrued payout, Joe mentioned previously, you remember many years, it used to be payouts.
Sure.
That that was what it was about. We capped the amount of vacation you accrued and we paid people out, but it improved more than that, and then then forward, they could not over that number.
Right.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on the on the C A O? I see that, um, for the twenty twenty three actual, we're up. The seventy one had changed, which is about fifteen thousand dollars up from the previous iteration. Um. I just, that number doesn't make any sense to me. Um, we had a. Someone for January and I believe into the beginning of February, and then we had somebody who ran into May. And then we have our current C A O from October onwards, so.
Okay.
Uh, well, October or end of September, so that cost should be higher, shouldn't it? I mean, if I total those numbers up, how did that come up to seventy one?
Um.
Really?
Uh, note nine eight. And then in reference to that, also the the figure for the twenty twenty two actual at three hundred thirteen. Which is down forty one thousand. Or we're down from four hundred and twelve in the previous iteration. So how did that those big, uh, these figures don't make any sense to me.
Um, so I didn't, um, we were third, so I did notice that, uh, you, you break down on that note nine A, um, uh, there was a. So what you see nine A is, uh, hardcoded, uh, so whenever I actually, uh, gone, I need to file bonds, uh. The numbers above are correct, the numbers underneath, I need to, anyone, but I did miss something there. So what I included in your, um, uh, package, uh, on table. Um, is, uh, that breakout here where it balances, so you can see, um, the actual costs.
So the three thirteen is back up to four oh six for actual for twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
So how is it, I mean, uh. How are we coming up with four hundred and six thousand as an expense if actual was twenty twenty two for C A O?
So then choose, um, your provision that was, uh, it's been filled by our auditors for, uh, whatever settlement was going to occur, like our promised yield of eighty five thousand dollars. Put it in B, I don't feel your, our, now, since for twenty twenty two.
So that would then be retroactively added to twenty twenty two.
So that was accrued, uh, as provision in twenty twenty two.
Okay.
And, um, would be paid in twenty twenty three whenever the settlement add.
Sure. But if you add that eighty five to the salary of the previous C A O for that year, you're nowhere near four oh six. How do you get there?
I can provide to you a detailed breakout of every, um, thing that's answered, uh, uh.
Sure, if I could, you need to have a little bit of sensitivity with regard to term disclosure of information.
Yeah.
Pertaining to that matter.
Right, but in general, without getting too specific, that number seems.
Seems high.
It seems extraordinarily high, and, uh, perhaps you could provide us offline listening to it.
Yeah, sure.
Previous point you're making that the payout for sick with for, um, holiday pay in sickly.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Or not sickly, like wellness, it's not like sick days as wellness pay that's accrued, one, eight hours per month, which, every month.
Because eight hours per month is a wellness spend.
Yeah.
For who? For all the senior staff?
Everybody.
For everybody.
Including me?
That was the contract, I'm trying to see if you got that.
You know, that was suit for you.
You know, yeah.
On the.
Yeah, I'm not well enough.
Yeah, I'm very big.
Say that smooth. That's eight hours, which is one day a month.
Yeah.
Seven a month.
Uh, eight hours per month.
Per month, okay, so that's one day, so that's twelve days per year.
Yeah, and that was accumulating over time, and then.
Right.
It means, for instance, um, uh, our former, uh, work manager had the. Hundred hours of accrued time.
Uh-huh.
It's just.
Is it, again, if that was capped, though, I I guess my point with that note one was that the number doesn't add up to me.
I can, I will.
Just give you two.
Let's get some detail on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Sorry, did you say eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, I I can buy that off mine.
Oh, okay.
That is.
And 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 also please estimate seventy one figure for the actual for for the C A O. That also doesn't, I mean, to me, that's gotta be. Thirty three percent higher, roughly.
Okay, I I can, uh, that number is, uh, in the internal table, on table, I don't, it's, uh, not the updated table.
I see the table, but is there a breakdown that?
Uh, there's a line under C A O, CFO, and so twenty twenty three is the hundred and three thousand dollars.
Uh, okay, that's the outdated version, so the seventy one is being corrected.
Yeah, that's gonna be that, that.
Okay, that's sort of what I was guessing, thirty, thirty.
Yeah, ready, okay.
Okay, Mark.
Okay, so, um, uh, are there any questions on administration at the moment? Um, I know that the the. Something to think about here, I got one thing I got to go to with platform fee and contract services. So fully on to note eight. Um. Have to provide a very detailed listing of what goes into this. Um, so the.
What page were you on there?
So we're on.
Page eleven of the package, or the?
Yeah, eleven of seventy five. Okay, yeah. Uh, practical fees are broken out by, uh, 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 provider, actually, and, uh, our legal fees, um, were a bit over, uh, by the twenty seven thousand dollars for a budget in, uh, uh, twenty twenty three. Um, and there were some related issues that, uh, uh, due to that increase. Uh, the budget is based on twenty twenty two.
Sorry, sorry, Joe, can I just stop you right there on the legal fees? And I didn't see that noted in note eight. For example, Robert Royale, Young Anderson are all listed as employment. I think most of us at the table know that's just damn well not the case. With this, uh, those, those should not be listed as employment at all.
Oh, sure, okay, I was looking at the end of it, it's not always.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now, and you're gonna give me a pointer, and you know, can fix those, um, uh, descriptors, um, I was going by what's the on our actual bill.
I don't know if you want me to do that in an open meeting.
Yeah, I I don't suggest it.
All right.
So, yeah, comments, they, yeah, online are appreciated.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, so we're, um, uh, one of those items that was, uh, in your, um, bridge from the previous draft, the current draft, I dropped, uh, in the twenty twenty four budget, contract services, I noted in B, um, by thirty thousand dollars, um, I carried forward the professional advisors cost of thirty thousand dollars in the last version, I get that out, we're not gonna have virtual advisors.
Okay, can can I just, or we're down at B already, are are we still talking about in reference to eight?
I own eight, yeah.
Okay, so I asked you at the beginning if we have now costs up to the end of the year, um. I mean, there's just one thing that just jumps out at me that is astounding here, twenty twenty two actuals for the audit are at forty eight thousand. Um. Uh, I I mean, I just, uh, we had a big.
Twenty twenty two, sorry.
Yeah, uh, so the audit is noted in lit, in in note eight as being twenty twenty two actual of forty eight. So those are the costs for the twenty twenty two audit, and that includes all billing up to the end of December?
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty two.
Twenty twenty three is the invoices received to December twenty twenty three. Um, and it's gonna get higher, maybe there's another conversation, we're gonna have to have a discussion about it.
Okay, just so I understand, though, the, under twenty twenty two actual, the cost for audit of forty eight, that is for the twenty twenty one audit?
Uh, that was, um.
It's.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, and so when I see a a a figure of sixty four. That is for the twenty twenty two audit, and that is the cost up to and including December thirty one. We know that's not the case.
You see it's higher.
It's gonna be higher.
So does that mean that's one of those lagging bill bills?
Yes, and it's gonna be an accrual, um, I, and, uh, we have a discussion as to why it's so much higher. Um, and, uh.
Well, I think most of us here know why it's higher, but I, uh, are are you telling me that the bill, because this this figure is unchanged?
It's gonna be, I would approximate, um, a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars in total after your final.
Jesus Christ. So we're gonna be at triple the cost.
Well.
For the twenty twenty two audit, which is still not complete.
Uh, yes, uh, again, I did speak with our partner, auto partner, um, last Friday. Um, I was, did not get an, or a Friday report, uh. Uh, I have to not yet have, uh, a message, but, um, to, for me to do their process, uh, with their address management partners in Toronto, uh, to, um, I. Review their work, uh, and, uh, see if there's any, those deficiencies or applies in there, um, in there.
So the twenty twenty two audit, so the the billing for December clearly has not come in yet, because this figure is the same as in your previous iteration, but your. The matter of your information is that the audit will cost us a hundred and twenty.
The next bill, um, I'm expecting from my conversations with the partners, uh, to get in a bill of, uh, thirty seven thousand dollars. As a progress bill, and then the final bill was the issue to report. Um, it's, um, uh, yeah, that's that's where we're at, to the best of my knowledge.
So that is a. An incredible situation. What? So what makes you so optimistic that are, that we should only be budgeting forty one for twenty twenty three?
And just got that.
Fifty five, which means, uh, forty.
Fifty five, yeah, it's, uh, yeah, that's where I would expect, and, um, we may have discussions about. Um, you know, where, uh, or what we wanna do, um, with our service providers, um, I would not suggest the, uh, change in our service providers currently. I expect it's gonna be significantly lower in the next year, um, after, um.
Potentially.
Potentially, potentially, after, uh, incorporating, um, or remediating, um, uh, items that that had caused.
Do we have any indication from the audit that they're gonna stop bringing our cash register anytime soon?
My conversation, I asked for a kind of a timeline, um, as to when we could expect to have this process wrapped up. Um, and, uh, the feedback that I received, but it's not gonna. Where, um, they're not going to say like, oh, it's gonna be like two months, it's gonna be hopefully two weeks. Um, but that was a week ago, so I am hoping to get another, I'm asking, following up for, um, an update as to where their process is at. Um, it's, I've not received any further requests, I understand there will be some. Resolve their internal management, um, uh, procedures, uh, to clean their, nearing for their subsequent events happening towards the most current date. Um, uh, but, uh, that should not take that much time at all, um. So as soon as I have any further information, I will give council an update.
But we're we're looking here at a week or two, perhaps.
In the financial statements, Ross, we had the financial statements, and then we. We reported out in close meetings, we reviewed and accepted the financial statements, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that should be, and they're not on the website or anything yet, is the, the reason for that, or is it?
Um. I I I don't have a good answer for you. I think that they. No, uh, I think the intent was to wait for the complete process, the whole process to be done. And and we post everything wrong, and then it bits and pieces. Um, and I don't think anyone was sort of expecting these lags, if you know what I mean, I think we were expecting it to be succession, it's not proven, looked out that way. So. It's sort of hurry up and wait, you know, do we do it, do we hold off? I mean, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm sure why it's taking. This company's quite so long since taken. Um, Joe doesn't have any insight as to why it's taking as long as it's taking. Uh, if it's done, which it seemed to me at that presentation right here.
Yeah, so as you can read the financial thing.
That it was done.
We're gonna have to do, and I've had a few reasons, where are they? Should be there, but they're not. We've not really seen them here.
Yeah, uh, we're waiting until they have the audit order, perhaps, and say it's final done.
Okay, but let's be clear, we, it's not that we have no idea, and it's not down to the company.
Well, it's not down to the company.
But it it's it's not B D O's fault that we don't have the audit.
Well, I'm not apportioning blame, I'm just simply saying that it's. From where we were when when D D O was sat at this table to where we are now, it's taken a lot longer. And I was expecting to kind of have some finality, if you will, around this situation, I would have expected prior to Christmas. Yeah, we still, I was a Chirkovs indicated that he has put several phone calls in over the last week and a half, and has not received a response. So there are these delays, so it's a big question mark, what's going on? Yeah, how long do we have to wait? What what's involved with with finalizing? Given that it was effectively finalized, what's left to do, how like pitter patter?
Uh, I would find them.
Well, we're changing this.
So that, that is uh, the main category administration, where there's some plus, uh, that from. Need it, uh, if you were to spend it to review in more detail, and quite any feedback or comments that you have, um, as far as the other notes and what have you, um, please feel free to reach out to me, I will, um, send out another, um, calendar of invites, um, uh, as I did previously. Uh, for hours that I've blocked out throughout the week, if you wanna give me a call, Zoom call, come in person, and I can sit down with you, and go through all the meat and potatoes, if anything you wanna go through, um, as a casual conversation, uh, to answer questions.
If I could, Joe, uh, this item, eleven conventions.
Yeah.
This is council's conventions, there's stuff.
Council is um, in council, but it's like.
This is staff?
Staff.
Okay, so I see one of them is down by five thousand. Uh, the L G M A G F O A dudes, that's down to a thousand from six. Right, from the previous iteration?
It may.
For twenty twenty three?
Moved, uh, so it's currently, association dues, I, um, here's a thousand, seventeen fifty, fifteen hundred, and they're all fairly consistent, um, it may have been that moved to the convention side line, which is G F O A E B C on.
Yeah, so under association dues, twenty twenty three budget of a thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
That was six thousand in the last one.
Yeah, so I think it's something, you got moved up to, um.
To the line above.
Yeah.
Under courses. And, which is a completely different animal.
To revert back to my, I'm grabbing, you know, you're back.
Are you, I'm trying by the pension line? The top line? So that would be six thousand.
Which, which line would that be, this top one?
Is this the one you're referring to, from here to here? I mean, that's five hundred, that's six thousand.
All right, yeah. Okay.
I guess, this, uh, our timer meeting here, try to tackle which are public works. Um, so the twenty twenty three actual, uh, was a million dollars. Uh, that included some, uh, costs with, uh, the line state, or the, um, uh, a bigger bridge re-able. He had the maintenance budget, uh, in twenty twenty three, which is a notified, um, specific detail. Um, there was a, twenty twenty three actual of seven hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, possibly, uh, primarily with respect to, um, uh, the, uh, bridge rehabilitation, where it was real budgeted three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Uh, the twenty twenty four budget has additional cost remediation, moving up to five hundred and eighty six thousand dollars, which represents a twenty double decrease over last year's budget, but it's less than the actual, actuals cost. Uh, we got that number with consultation with public works, um, and as we have that, some notes here, um. Uh, so there, that was the main stocks item, and, um.
There's no, is it?
Uh, that's note five.
Uh, okay.
And then, um, also, seven, in fact, we're in fact, we're in contract services, which has increased significantly. Uh, and this is based on our invitations from public work, says the product label that we pursue.
Okay, Joe, just, just pause for one second, there's nothing, we're not discussing this much, I don't think we didn't, maybe just make, so those are bridge maintenance items, what we now doing, there's, there's stuff we used to do, the supplemental, and, and now we're gonna have this budget. Um, in here, there's all these bridges, something goes on, I see them, ten, ten, we have to do, just move into our fractions.
So.
So, with the plan, going forward, we're gonna have, you know, sort of, three hundred thousand, kind of number, maintenance, the maintenance items, with the, the, the negative brackets, there are road paving and bridges, that, that's the kind of strategy going forward?
So, yeah, it's a bit of confusion, and I was asking myself, how the, um, or it's for saying the capital expenditures, uh, above and below, that's starting to worry. Operating or maintenance items were included in capex, uh, for instance, like road paving, road paving is a maintenance expense, this is your operating budget. Uh, it's not capital. Um, uh, so that's where it's.
And you're asking what it was worth?
Uh huh.
Yeah, it's, um, and that's pretty specific in, um, uh, public sector accounting standards, um, they talk about, um, okay, if you're, say, say, and they give specific examples, if you're, say you have a road, and then you add a lane, capitalize that, if you're adding something, if you bought a road, that's theoretically the last word in fifty years, they just gotta, you know, do a little more paving, you know, create some potholes or what have you, that's a maintenance, I don't mean expensive, expensive period, it's very, it's quite specific. So where I was confused in the, prior, by this, was the, what you call capital expenditures included, operating items that are actually going through your general operating budget. Um, and so what I was, and that's why we're, um, I'm providing, I think, a significant amount of detail here, um, for where you have significant variances, to show, so that when we budget going forward, um, that these one-time costs, um, uh, there, I was, I would go scope, or I should say, uh, different than ongoing routine, I don't have a bunch of supplemental attached. Uh, and then, for instance, with the, um, bridge maintenance, so to. Need. So prior year was the baby bridge, funny going forward, with this different bridge deck joints, um, and it was a timber construction selection. Then I, there, that's the, these cost estimates developed with public works. Um, and that's a specific item going into twenty twenty five, um, it's not included in the budget, when how it's budgeted, we have no idea if we need to do that or not. Uh, so it's, that's one of those items that's managed specifically, not with like our last year's plus inflation.
Okay, I think, um, you know, the, the really challenging decisions are going to be in the supplemental realm. And I think Carl would certainly, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I think he would appreciate a discussion around, it's one thing to sort of earmark these projects, it's another thing to project manage them, and, uh, I'm thinking Carl is a little bit concerned about how they're gonna get project managed. Uh, and, I don't think, I, I mean, he, he will talk to this, but I think their value in making sure council asks that question, it's great that we have all these projects, how, what do we have to do to make sure they get done?
I think, on this topic, I think the assumption is, if it's in the normal operating part of.
Yeah, I was talking about this.
That it is something we can't manage, whether it's a bridge replacement or.
I think you should ask Carl that question. Cause I wonder, you know, I don't know, I'm not clear entirely, Carl needs to sort of speak to this. What's the tipping point, how many of these projects, is it a half a dozen small ones, or one big one, sort of thing, what is the best combination?
I think, I think the operation wants to be managed closely.
Because I think that needs to factor into council's deliberations, you know, if we can't afford to hire a project manager, yada, 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 there's no point in, in setting aside money for that for twenty twenty four.
I go to the other supplemental you're talking about.
Yes.
I'm talking about these ones, right, and, and, there's no project management line items, so you assume pressure management.
It's a part of the operations. I, I guess, uh, part of, uh, I gotta go and put words into, uh, Mr. Ver's milk, um, however, uh, my understanding is that the request, um, and I was gonna highlight this in, uh, the salaries discussion for public, public workers.
Your question is for Carl online.
Yeah, we're gonna ask Carl. That'd be great. Carl, if you can hear us?
Yeah, no, I can hear you fine, so, um, yeah, I mean, a, as Ross points out, this, this is sort of a chicken and egg situation. That if we don't do one part of the, of the budget request, which is for a purchasing, bidding, tendering, uh, contracts, project management person, uh, uh, I, I certainly cannot pull off personally all, all the projects that I've, uh, sort of, uh, requested budget for. Um, which ones can I do, well, that remains to be seen, uh, what the priorities are. As council knows, I sent you a note today, uh, on, on the priority. My single priority, uh, this year is going to be water supply and leakage. Um, there's sort of about nine projects underneath that that need to be done. Um, some of them need to be funded, um, before the budget gets approved, because, um, they'll be too late if, if they're not. Too late to make a difference, I mean, um, the others are, uh, vital, but less time, uh, sensitive, and others are nice to have, so, um, you know, uh, you, you know, there's fourteen hour, work hours in a day, six workdays in a week, um, how much can you do in that time, well, you know, a reasonable amount. Uh, not all of the projects that I've posed, so one of the ways that I've posed solve this problem is, is a pro, project manager. And as you also saw in the note that I sent you today, um, the three projects that, that the previous, uh, contract project manager had, had been pointed at, um. You know, they're, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be well managed, um, at, at sort of the detail level, you know, invoice comes in, and you have to then fight with the vendor and saying, hang on a sec, you charge us for two cans of paint, but you only used one and a half, you know, that, that kind of level, otherwise things expand very quickly, um. So to answer the, the, or to address the point, uh, we have a lot that we have to do this year. Otherwise, we are gonna be in a world of hurt come, um, mid-July, late July, early August, um. But we also need to do all the other projects, and so, you know, one, one of the asks is, is a, is an operational budget thing, not a capex or not a supplemental, and that is, that is for a project manager, in other words, adding a headcount.
So Carl, that, that, I didn't, I wasn't expecting to hear it that way, but let me just, my first thought was, if it's on the operational budget, use your bridge ends, uh, initial payment you wanted to use, or the line planning, so normally do, then you'd be able to manage that, but I don't see the line here for the project manager, on the supplemental, through capex supplemental, we'll be able to consider when we add a project, how we're gonna manage it. But you, but are you saying, even if we added nothing from the supplemental list, would you would still be able to manage the bridge end replacements, and give that into the operation budget, would you?
Yeah, I mean, some of this stuff is sort of day-to-day role stuff that requires, you know, just, just a few, uh, you know, fifteen minute segments a day. Um, the, the need or, or the desire to move certain items out of supplementals or capex or, or investment type of, uh, spending into maintenance, uh, is an, is an accounting need, but I'm actually the proponent of it. I, I really think we need to distinguish between capex and, and, um, extraordinary maintenance, let's call it, for things like bridge ends, for example, or, for example, the, uh, three-two-five, uh, Bayview driveway bridge that we had to finish last year. Those are maintenance items, those are not actually gaining us anything new, and, and P S A P is, is quite explicit about it. Those should be included in operating budget, not, not in a capex budget. So, uh, you know, I support that, and to answer the question, well, you know, I'd like to think so, but, um, there are only so many hours in the day. I think to, to solve the problem, I think adding, uh, a project, an in-house project management resource, uh, will probably go most of the way, if not all, to, to addressing issue.
So, so then Joe was showing the line, and this, on table, I have to be able to read as a project manager, because I was saying, I don't see one. But where on this sheet am I seeing the project manager?
It's made into, um, so it's not, uh, I haven't split out the, in what you're presented with here, like all the specific, uh, account code. That's why I presented this, um, in response to your question, for the information on.
No, I didn't, I mean, it's one hour. Okay, I didn't pick up, so we baked in the product manager here, we, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the blue square on your, on your, uh, on table item there, it's the blue square at ninety three thousand.
Hmm, and I, I would like to find out, um, also, just, uh, just for priority, when you're looking at the public works, the requests and actuals. On the second page, there is a, um, I'm, um, representing budget versus actual, one budget, one fifth, mean for public works costs in total. Um, and pretty much every single year, it's right on target, except for last year, where, uh, we budgeted nine hundred and eight thousand, and we spent, um, six hundred and three, seven thousand. We couldn't get people to, you can.
Okay, so now there's a question, so on this sheet you got on the table, and this one's here, I see the ninety three thousand. But, uh, total budgets, and you got margin, the reason is because you have the work staff with considerably less people, is that true in the intention?
So there is a slight difference in the makeup in work staff, so, um, historically, a large portion of the, uh, breakdown in public work salary costs, it's been in tech one, tech two. Um, in the current year, we've had one, that staff number that's elevated to fourman one. So in the fourman category, it's gone up from last year, one thirty six to two hundred and eighty five. Um, and then everything else is, and that's why there's a decrease in the gray part, you see, um, which is the tech one, tech two, it's moved to a different classification. We're still looking at seven F T Es.
So let me ask this, if all things were equal, right, um, in twenty twenty three, and in everything except the project manager, I would expect twenty twenty four would be ninety three thousand dollars higher. Why is it only eight thousand dollars higher?
For kind of be more efficient, yeah.
Wow. Okay.
All right.
So you pay, you pay for the project manager with other, with other.
We're, uh, at eighty forty, forty eight. We wanna go under ten minutes?
I'm doing this, I just wanna release the statement.
Yeah.
So we have to pay for the project manager, while you're telling me here, by reducing, splitting up differently, other works you're staying.
This represents, um, on paper, bottom worksheet, um, that, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Ver has prepared, uh, and I've gone through with it in detail, what their expectation is, is on, uh, basically a seven, uh, eight F T E, if we include a problem.
Yeah, that's right, we're not gonna add headcount, um, I, we obviously are still short one headcount. Um, we are discussing internally whether we can actually live with that, uh, which, which may be a budget savings, but, uh, we're still, we're still sort of budgeting for the, the unfulfilled or un, unfilled, uh, space still. I mean, yes, I'm looking at, uh, Joe's on-table item here, and costs only go of eight grand. Um, I guess that's how the numbers add up, because, uh, um, you know, he, he's in possession of all of, all of the numbers, and, and this is probably about right. We also think through efficiencies, we will reduce, uh, as, as you know, significant overtime on, uh, standby and, and overtime uh, within, within public works, the only thing we can't predict is how much snowplow time we need. But the rest, uh, I can be fairly predictive of, in terms of, um, maintenance on, on the, uh, the plants, the, the water treatment plants, uh, intake clearing, that kind of thing, so, yeah, I, I think, uh, Neville, I think th- those numbers are probably good.
Okay, all right, um, it's a project manager, you got your mind, like, about headcount, two, three days a week, for that number, three days a week?
I think, well, so it's base, base, um, ask is seventy five thousand, and then you include, um, the, uh, benefits associated with deposition, you go up to ninety three, so ninety three is all inclusive, every cost can be filtered back into it.
There's not a full time employee.
Uh, Carl, uh, would you like to answer how much the expectation is for that time?
I think this is an important other conversation to have, uh, because there's different ways to deliver this.
Yeah, that's, I'm assuming.
See, so, yeah, I've always baked it into, into the, into the projects, project manager cost or construction manager, we're gonna be clear which one we're talking about. Uh, and whether, you know, there may be value in just, uh, uh, working with an engineering company, pick a, a random name, an urban systems, a standic or whatever, to provide us a fuller suite of project services, whether it be engineering, uh, you know, in relation to water, whether it be in relation to road design, uh, whatever, as well as construction management services, there might be a bigger discussion that needs to happen, where all of this stuff gets folded in.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just add that, um, you know, the, 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 the point around that is that, uh, what this function is and how it's delivered, I, I don't really know yet. Um, I see it as much as, as a finance function, as a project, as a public works function, specifically because they will be managing, uh, bidding, contracting, um, invoicing, that kind of stuff, um. In terms of the important projects, specifically the highway tank replacement, and a few others that I've noted to you, uh, there I have, uh, included in the, in the scope, that the, the engineer or the contractor or whoever it is, it'll be some form of design build, meaning, uh, inbuilt, uh, project manager, because those projects have to be done, and, you know, I can't wait for a project manager to come on board, which it may take a while to find it, seventy five thousand. Um, and to answer your question, Neville, my, my, my feeling is that would be a full-time, uh, uh, mid-level manager type position, uh, that would be brought on potentially to even take on the role, uh, the, the management role in public works down the road, uh, but, and I don't need to tell you the price points of, of public works managers, because I am one, um, but, uh, that's thinking there, that would be a, a full-time, quite. Um, but uh, that's thinking there, that would be a full-time quasi-admin role.
Alright, guys, I think we're done with that, um, we ran overtime. Uh, we have more to do at your own meetings. Second. All favor.
Yeah.
Okay, both, very, alright, thanks to everyone, thanks, Joel.
Just a moment, working okay for your money?
That.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, just a chance to give you some questions.
Roll up the sleeves.